Hello, everyone. Hello, Ms. Dredden. Ms. Dredden, you're muted. You gotta come off of mute. Here, let me have it. Thank you. Ms. Dredden. Hey, Ms. Dredden.
Okay, it's done. Okay, we're good. Thanks. All right.
Good evening.
Yes, Mrs. Pitts, are you unmuted now?
Um, can you, can you hear me, Dr. Potte?
Yes, I can.
Oh, okay. Well, then, yes.
No. I spoke to, I spoke to Mike and he said that, um, that if, if the switch was on for muted, but it was an oversight. So you should, everybody should be good at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
We are. Thank you.
All right. Take care.
Thanks, Dr. Potte.
Okay, I'll be right back.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see everyone.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we all halfway through our decorations or some of us finished with our decorations?
No, not even close.
I agree with you. That's one thing for sure.
What did you say, Mr. Shaw?
I got so much going on right now. It's not even funny.
Oh. Prioritize, prioritize. That's what they tell me.
No, my dad's in the hospital. My mother-in-law just got out of the hospital, so it's.
What? Well, then, you need prayer. You need prayer, Mr. Shaw. My goodness.
Susan's mother had a complication where she had a seizure and she got put in the hospital. She got out of the hospital. My dad, yesterday, we found out, uh, he had a major car accident on 295 and he's in Cooper right now, so.
Oh, John, well, listen, we won't hold you too long tonight at all.
Well, we, no, we, we met, my brother and I are on top of that, so we managed to find all the information out and we're on top of everything for my dad right now, so we're good to go with that.
Okay, well, we'll keep him in our prayers.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can you, uh, hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Ms. Dredden.
Yeah, you're, you're very low. I cannot hear you very well.
You can't?
I hear you, but it's not loud or anything. It's very low.
What?
I checked my volume and stuff and.
Your volume is okay because I hear you as well. Can everyone else hear me well?
Yes.
Yes, I, I, I hear you fine. I hear Ms. Dredden fine.
I hear you, but it's very low. I hear everyone low. It's low. Ever since I got unmuted, uh, it's very low.
Ever since you got unmuted, it's very low?
Unmuted, yeah. When, uh, the first time, um, Julie gave on, I could hear her very loud and clear. But now, ever since I was able to get on the unmute, uh, it seems like, um, everyone is very low.
Now, it's interesting.
The volume is low, but I went and checked my volume in the middle of this, but I can hear you, but I gotta really listen.
Now, you're, you're coming through loud and clear, Ms. Dredden.
Loud and clear. You know, loud. I can hear you, but it's not loud.
But it's not loud.
I don't know why.
Are you on, you're on your PC? You on your?
Huh?
You on your desktop computer?
No, I'm on my phone as always.
Oh, you, oh, you on your phone?
Yeah, I don't have a desktop computer.
Okay, okay. Now, uh, uh, that's, that's fine because we can see you, we can hear you.
But I always hear very well. I mean, I always hear and see everyone really well on this phone, this type of phone I have, but.
Right.
I don't know why the volume dropped down like that after.
After we were all unmuted.
Wait, let me see something. Okay, I hear you better.
Okay.
I hear you better.
Okay, what was the issue?
The issue was that it's a little, looked like a little marking up at the top.
Right.
And one is their phone. And then it was speaker. So what I did was changed it automatically to, let me try speaker.
Okay.
Okay.
And now we're good. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, so when is the next Eagles game? Don't laugh, Julie. John, when is the next Eagles game? Do you know?
Hmm, hmm, I, I have no idea.
When do we play again?
I'm about done with football right now.
I agree with you, Mr. Shaw, with, we're right on target. I agree.
Come on now, we, we can't give up.
I couldn't even believe, uh, Pittsburgh.
Wentz, they sit him down, didn't they?
Yeah, they sat Wentz down. And, and who's the quarterback now? Julian Hertz, is it?
Ja- Jalen Hurts.
Oh, Jalen, Jalen Hurts. I'm thinking about, I'm thinking about Julie's nephew. Oh, so, so John, is Jalen, right? Is Jalen Hurts?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay.
I'm used to that name.
Oh, hello. Good evening, Mr. Long. How are you?
He better get used to that name.
Get used to that.
Yep, they're gonna have a very expensive backup.
I hope we, uh, I hope we lose out so we get the better draft pick.
I think we're gonna beat you for the better draft pick.
Yeah, yeah. At this rate, the NFC East is gonna have three teams in the top 10, maybe in the top 5.
Yeah, you win the division, you go all the way to 22.
Yeah. And the rest of the teams will be in the top 5.
I needed that.
Do you think, do you think, um, Coach Peterson will be around much longer?
Yeah, I think he's bought some time.
Think he's bought some time?
Yeah, yeah. The Super Bowl, they tend to give you a little bit of.
Okay. Good evening, Ms. Martin. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good evening.
Hey.
Good evening.
Hey there, Ms. Kelly. Unmute yourself.
Nice to have Ms. Martin.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Um, Mr. Shaw, for the, um, town hall?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the public are, how are they coming in? Are they coming in via phone call or are they gonna be on the Zoom?
They're, they're gonna be on the, uh, um, the, on the WebEx and, uh, YouTube livestream, they'll be able to raise their hand and we'll be able to call on them. And there, we'll be addressing it during the marketing committee meeting minutes. Because there's also a section where there, if you notice on the meeting minutes, where there's gonna be, um, something going up on the website as well.
Okay, I, my reason. Okay, so my reason for asking that is, is that, um, I'm, I'm working on the CAC um, and I wanted to know how you were doing your, your town hall because we're gonna probably need to do something very similar for the, um, CAC. As far as the meeting is concerned. So that was my reason for the question.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Thomas, you look very comfortable. How are you this evening? Good.
A, a cold.
Uh, a cold?
Yeah, I, I wanna call it a cold allergy, maybe.
Okay, that's, that's all that it is?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that is it. But thank you.
Hope you feel better.
Okay, folks, I'm looking at, uh, 5:58. Are we all at 5:58? Two minutes and counting?
Yes. 5:58. Good evening, Dr. Potte.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. How are you this evening?
Great. Fantastic.
Good.
I don't see Mr. Blake. Am, is, am I missing Mr. Blake? No.
Doesn't, doesn't look like he's here.
Doesn't, okay, I see, I see Ms. McLendon is here, but, um.
Yes.
Yes, I'm here. Hello, everyone.
Did you meet Ms. McLendon?
Good evening, Ms. McLendon.
Good evening.
Where's Ms. Mitchell?
Oh, you're right. No, Ms. Ms. Mitchell is not here yet either.
Well, we do know that her mother's, uh, home-going service was on Monday.
Okay. You're all set. I didn't get any message from her at all, but, okay.
You're all set, Mrs. Pitts.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Winslow. Good evening, board members and administrators. Welcome to the regular Board of Education meeting of the Winslow Township Board of Education. Today is Wednesday, December 9th, 2020. Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates and notices dated August 31st, 2020 and December 2nd, 2020. Adequate and electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier-Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, the municipal building, the library, the Buck-Dubel Center, Edgewood Acres, Elm Town, and the Winslow Township Post Offices. And this is our mission statement. The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, and growing community, is to educate all students to become independent lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and confident members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community and in the climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages our students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring the knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Present.
Ms. Dredden?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Ms. McLendon?
Present.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes, not doing this yet?
Okay. Mr. Shaw?
Present.
Ms. Thomas?
Present.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
And Ms. Pitts?
Present.
We have a quorum?
Thank you, Ms. McLendon. May we take a minute and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. McLendon, would you read our 2020, 2021 goals, please?
Yes, Madam President. The 2020, 2021 district goals. Number one, student achievement. Continue to implement best practices for delivering instruction to students utilizing all available and appropriate instructional modes. This shall include, A, ensuring articulation at all grade levels throughout the district, B, focus on classroom instruction at all grade levels, C, ensuring all students have equal access to equipment and resources needed to facilitate and promote student learning in any setting, D, evaluation and updating all district programs, E, accountability of all district staff. Number two, continue to foster a positive school environment that is conducive to teaching and learning, which is, A, focus on building relationships among staff that will result in increased learning and more effective instruction, B, promote creative instruction, which will be training and retraining, C, emphasis on collaboration with all district stakeholders, D, promote cultural competence throughout district, E, teacher-to-student relationships, and F, student-to-student relationships. Lastly, number three, market our strengths and achievements to all stakeholders to increase capacity for greater parent, caregiver, and community support. Sales, A, continue with our public relations and marketing plan, B, continue to work with the various advisory committees in the district, and C, examine communication methods utilized by district.
Thank you, Ms. McLendon.
You're welcome, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving now to, uh, page two. Um, awards and presentations, would there be any this evening, Dr. Potte?
No, Madam, uh, President, there are no presentations this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Potte. Moving now to correspondence, Ms. Boyle, would there be any correspondence?
Sorry to cut you off, Ms., uh, Pitts, but we have no correspondence for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, board members, I'm asking for a motion to approve the following minutes from our last meeting. I'm asking for a motion to approve the minutes from our special meeting that was held on November 18th, 2020, open session. Is there a motion?
Motion, Shaw.
Move by Mr. Shaw. Is there a second? Mr. Blake, I see your head shaking, but I don't hear you. You can't talk? You can talk? You can't talk? Okay.
Peterson, second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved in second. Uh, the minutes for our special meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
That's a yes.
Ms. Dredden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson? And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried. And for clarification, I saw Mr. Mr. Blake, for those that are just listening, I got the thumbs up.
Okay.
So that was, that was his yes.
Okay, and again, for those that are listening, uh, I, I think apparently Mr. Blake's, um, voice will not be with us, but he is still participating by way of his thumbs. At this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve the minutes from our special meeting held November 18th, 2020, closed session. Is there a motion?
Motion, Shaw.
It's been moved by Mr. Shaw and seconded by Ms. Peterson. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake? Two thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Dredden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
All right, that motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Now, at this point, board members, I'm asking for a motion to approve the minutes of our board meeting that was held on November 24th, 2020, which was a regular meeting. I'm asking for a motion on the open session. Is there a motion?
Motion, Shaw.
Second, Peterson.
Moved by Mr. Shaw, seconded by Ms. Peterson. Further comment or questions on these minutes? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ah!
Ms. Dredden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
At same.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Board members, we're moving now to our committee reports. I'm going to begin with our education committee. Is there a report out of our education committee?
No, just two comments, Madam President. Uh, the committee will meet for, in December, on Monday, December the 14th, at 3:30 via phone. Also, board members, I sent you an application, uh, for a school-age tuition assistance program provided by New Jersey Department of Education and families. I did check. The deadline was December 7th. I checked with the Department of Education. It has closed. I just wanted to let you know that I did send it to several individuals so that they could take advantage of it or share it with other people.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. I'm sure that's, that's something that is greatly needed and will be appreciated. Moving now, um, Mr. Shaw, because I know certainly that you have the athletic and marketing and, uh, we want to hear about the town hall. So let's have you report out now.
Okay. Okay, um, I don't have, we'll start with the athletic committee. There is no report for that.
Okay.
So, um, the marketing committee met, uh, last night at six P M via WebEx. Um, in attendance were myself, Dr. Potte, uh, Ms. Thomas, Mr. Blake and Mr. Aponte. Topics of discussion last night were, um, the parent survey, which the tabulations will be completed, and Dr. Potte will be discussing them at some point during tonight's board meeting, I, um, uh, uh, he let us know last night. Um, we discussed the county, uh, wide COVID rate, which as of Monday was at sixteen point one percent of, uh, positive test results. Um, and that's based off a seven day window. Um, Camden County is still currently orange. Um, and if that sixteen point one gets any closer to twenty percent, as if we go over twenty percent, um, schools stand a chance of shutting down.
Okay.
Um, uh, next thing we talked about was, uh, the superintendent's real talk. Uh, parents have been asking about the restart date for school. Um, as we have it right now, we're starting for our hybrid learning, uh, model on January fourth. Um, parents were asking about January nineteenth because of the going back into the Martin Luther King holiday. Um, so that was one of the things that's been a hot topic at the real talk. Um, one of the other things we talked about was
Okay, we've lost Mr. Shaw.
Hold on one second.
Okay, we can, yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, um, that if if you decide not to go back, uh, hy- on the hybrid model right away, and you're remote, and you do decide to go back eventually to the to the hybrid model, um, that you will need to give at least two weeks' notice prior to the beginning of the marking period in order to go back into the hybrid model. Um, next, the virtual town hall. Like, the link, it will go up on the WebEx and the YouTube livestream. They will be published, um, in the next few days. Um, uh, they will be, the links will go up on to the district website. And once we have them, I I myself and the, or myself and the other marketing committee members, um, we will start to get them out, um, via the district Facebook page. I'll put them all over the, uh, the, uh, proud parents of Winslow, the I'm, I'll try to get them to the HSA members so they can put them all over the HSA pages and some other community members to post them all over the other Winslow, uh, pages. Uh, and we'll try to place, uh, get the word out as much as we possibly can. Um, also, on the district website, there will be a chance for those who won't be able to make it to have a chance to submit questions for, um, the virtual town hall. So, um, and in the next, uh, section, I'm going to give the agenda so that, and you'll have a copy of that also, where you'll be able to, uh, have the chance to ask your questions based upon that. So that will be one of the other things that we're going to do, so that way parents and community members will have a chance to ask questions. And they won't feel like they're being left out because they can't have a chance to make it. Um, so, and one of, and there will also be a robocall going out for the town hall, um, by Dr. Potte discussing the, uh, the time, date and the format. Um, the next, uh, thing is the agenda. Um, as I stated, I believe in November on my marketing committee report, the agenda will be the opening of the schools update, the COVID nineteen update, the HVAC update and the parent survey update. Um, just a brief, uh, statement from me for the virtual town hall. When we go through the virtual town hall, the one thing that I'm going to ask the community to do is to respect everybody as they talk. Um, and give give me a chance because I'm going to be the moderator and I'm going to try to be as fair as possible to uh, moderate this and to pick people as I go. And as I see you raise your hand, I'm not gonna uh, uh, I'm not gonna be, uh, quick to, um, uh, yeah, pick people because I'm going to be looking all over my computer screen. This is going to be very tricky because it's a yeah, I'm going to be going based upon people raising their hands on a computer screen. So I'm going to need you to be patient and very respectful. Um, as we go through this, I'm going to try to be as accommodating as possible, and we got to be as, uh, respectful to the people that are answering the questions as well. So I'd appreciate, you know, everybody's respect and we're going to make this work as best as possible to give everybody the answers they need. So thank you ahead of time and uh, the last thing is the ne- uh, next town hall after the December sixteenth town hall. We're going to try to have it in March. So that way we can see where we're at as far as COVID and the, uh, in-school learning if we're there. And that's the end of my report. The meeting ended at six forty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Shaw?
Yes, Madam President.
Ms. Peterson?
I I want to thank Mr. Shaw and the committee for extensive report. For those that are unable to come, uh, in, is it possible to tape or record the, um, town hall meetings and put it on the website for future use?
Uh, I believe so because it's going to be on YouTube, um, YouTube livestream, so I believe that can, it will be recorded anyway. Uh, Mr. Aponte, we can reach out to him and find out.
Um, It will be recorded, Mr. Shaw. It will be recorded.
Yeah, I I figured so, Dr. Potte, but I just wanted to, you know, we'll, I figure we could reach out and just double check.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw, I have a question too.
Okay, Ms. McLendon?
What, you mentioned about the parent survey. Um, I know that there have been a lot of questions about duplications and, um, just wondering, Dr. Potte, you probably have the answer for this. Have you planned out a way to weed out the duplications? Um, only because I know some parents were filling out it on the website and then when they went to the Genesys, you, they couldn't get into Genesys unless they repeat the process. And I, I know that I had some questions about that from parents and I just told them, you know, don't worry about it, you know, um, it'll be figured out. So not saying that we won't get close to accurate information, um, and just based off the way things are looking at now, um, I'm not sure if the district has thought about maybe as we get closer to January or in January, do like, um, I guess, I don't want to say another poll, but yeah, as we get closer knowing whether or not if our schools are actually going to open up, maybe do a day or two days of parents is going on, um, doing a poll again to get the accurate information. And maybe just having it located in one spot because I know we were trying to reach as many people as possible. Um, but it being on certain places, not allowing parents to move forward unless they actually did it and they've done it like two or three times. Times already, that may have, um, you know, torn it, the data as far as accuracy, so.
Uh, Mrs. McLendon, I will be responding briefly this evening on, um, the survey, but we have a mechanism in place where we were able to delete the duplicates.
Good, good. Okay.
Numbers that I'll be reporting out this evening, I I think, um, we've had a substantial, um, response and I think it will be more than enough at this point for us to move forward. So at this point, um, I am comfortable in saying we were able to eliminate the duplicates and the numbers we have that I'll report out tonight, um, once the board and community hear them, I think they will be, uh, satisfied with the outcomes.
Perfect. And secondly, Mr. Shaw, you mentioned about with the town hall. Um, just a suggestion or recommendation, maybe have another one of your committee members actually look, depending on how many people we have on the town hall, to kind of give you assistance to let you know, okay, I see three hands and that way you can call, you know, the individuals as they see them. But it may help to have another one of your committee members kind of looking to see who's raising because you'll be talking and trying to do that and watch and see what people are doing. Maybe a little difficult. So this is a suggestion. It may streamline it a little bit more easier for you, um, for the town hall meeting.
Yep, definitely.
Okay, okay. Any any other questions or comments for Mr. Shaw before we move on? Thank you, hearing none. Would there be a report at this time from the operations committee? Now, Ms. Dredden, I saw your lips moving, but we didn't hear you.
Sorry, Adam Peterson, not at this time.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Dredden. With regards to the policy committee, policy members, um, unless there are some extremely urgent policies, and I'm going to ask Dr. Carcamo if indeed there's, she feels that there's, um, policies that have come in that we need to review this month. If not, then we will, um, we will not have a policy committee meeting this month. Dr. Carcamo?
Mrs. Pips, we don't have anything pressing, so we can delay our policy meeting.
Thank you very much. So board members, we will, uh, we will, uh, suspend. We will not have a policy committee meeting for December. Okay? Moving now to the, um, negotiations, uh, committee. I know I don't, I don't use the gas, but Mr. Long, is there anything that you would like to share with us this evening from negotiations?
No, just we're, uh, working together to pu- to finalize an MOA and, um, bring it before the board for approval and then subsequent ratification of the agreement, but we're, we're, we're getting there.
Okay, MOA, uh, standing for memo?
Member, uh, memorandum of agreement.
Thank you, Mr.
Identifying the specific terms between the WTEA and the district.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Long. Moving now, um, Ms. Martin, we're moving now to the, um, citizen advisory committee.
Yes, Madam President. Um, just for the board's, um, information, the two things that you asked us to address, and that was the number of members, um, that were going to be selected for the committee. And the committee pretty much has determined that, um, we're going to, one, uh, open it up to the community, Winslow Township community, as well as Chiselhurst community. And the number of members, um, are probably going to be in the neighborhood of ten to twelve. Um, the second piece was how were we going to go about this? Um, and the plan is to do a Zoom and that's just nearly, or I'm sorry, maybe, yeah, what we're doing now, WebEx, um, where we have just a meet and greet. And, um, Mr. Shaw, the reason for asking you how you were doing your virtual town hall is because I needed some info on how we could possibly do that. So that was my reason for asking your question. Also to you, um, and your committee, I would ask if we could have just a few seconds at the end of the town hall to make the announcement about when that WebEx would take place, if that's okay with you. Um, and at this point in time, to my committee members and, um, the board president, we will probably meet just one more time just to finish finalizing everything.
Okay, okay. Ms. Ms., um, Ms. Martin, with regards to your, the restructuring committee, um, is it, are you saying that with regards to, um, one of the tasks that I asked that you give us a recommendation with regards to limited and unlimited, are you saying that we want to just limit going forward, the CAC to just twelve people?
About twelve would be fine.
And so, so is, are you recommending that, um, we not go over twelve? Because if we're going to advertise, then if we're, if we're going to get more than twelve people, then what is going to be our process of elimination?
Yes, I am asking that we don't go over twelve.
Okay.
And as far as how many apply, um, I wanted to have a brief conversation with my committee members to finalize what those steps may be.
Okay, and so therefore we'll get that information at our next, uh, meeting on December twenty second?
That is correct.
Okay. Board members, any questions with regards to the citizen advisory restructuring committee? Recommendations? None?
Uh, Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Um, will there be, uh, are the, are any term limits for the CAC? Are they one year, two year?
One year.
Um, one year, okay.
That's the recommendation. Now, board members, understand what Ms. Martin is giving us, our recommendations. We as a board will have to do the final, um, determination. We do understand, correct? Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, Ms. Martin.
No problem.
No problem. Any further questions for Ms. Martin? Thank you, board members. Moving now, board members, I'm on page two. At this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve our superintendent's report that begins at the bottom of page two and continues through to the middle of page four. Is there a motion?
Motion, Shaw.
I I saw Mr. Blake, he said second. Put you, are we putting the thumbs up again, Mr. Blake?
Blake, second, I'm sorry.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Blake. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Peterson?
On page three, unless I'm reading it wrong, number thirteen. Fifty thousand?
Number thirteen, the amount, two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yes. Is that correct?
I have to double check with Ms., um, with Ms., excuse me, with Dr. Carcamo on that.
Okay.
To me like two hundred and fifty, but Dr. Carcamo?
Mrs. Boyle, I'm trying to, uh, pull the, uh, the agenda. What is the item, please?
It's, it's item thirteen, Dr. Carcamo, on page three. It says school five alliance to save energy.
It should be two hundred, it should be two hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, not two hundred and fifty thousand.
No, two hundred and fifty.
Though Mrs. Boyle was giving away money.
So, board members, I'm going to, um, with regards to that item, I'm going to ask Mr. Shaw and, uh, Mr. Blake. Are there still, um, the motions to, um, move this forward? Is it still in place?
Yes, Madam President.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
All right. So therefore, board members, if there's no further questions or comments, uh, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve with that correction from two hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and fifty dollars on the report. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredden?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Piz?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, board members, uh, at this time, I'm asking for a motion to approve the business administrator's board secretary's report that begins at the bottom of page four and continues through, continues through to the middle of page seven. Is there a motion?
Motion, Shaw.
Blake, second.
It has been moved by Mr. Shaw and second by Mr. Blake. With, are there further questions or comments?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Peterson?
Page six, item twelve, just clarification. Will the HVAC system, uh, be repaired in time for the January fourth deadline? Where students are repaired?
Um, Ms. Peterson, I, item twelve on page six is just, um, a consensor coil at school four, um. I'd have to look up with the vendor to see if if that's an issue or when they're going to be done, but this does not really, um, impact.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? On this report? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson? And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, Board members, on at the top of page eight, I'm asking for a motion to approve the personnel report that begins and ends on page eight. Is there a motion?
Motion, Shaw.
Blake, second.
Moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Blake. Would there be any further questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Board members, at this time, I'm moving to our addendum, which we, I believe we all received. And so therefore, I'm asking for a motion to approve the Business Administrator, Board Secretary's report as it appears on our addendum, starting with page one of our addendum and moving to page two. Is there a motion?
Motion, Shaw.
Blake, second.
Moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Blake. Further comments or questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ms. Dredin?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. McLendon?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
And Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Thank you. Moving now, Board members, returning to our agenda. I'm on the top of page nine. We're at the Open Public Records Act. Ms. Ms. Boyle?
Yes, Madam President. We received a request by Mr. Adam Sheridan, the co-chair of the Winslow Township Education Association Health and Safety Committee. There were four requests, the results of any studies or surveys about the HVAC system. Those documents were denied because they do not exist. They requested our purchase orders for HVAC maintenance or installation since September 1st, 2020. That was approved, the documents were supplied. Any and all logs of reports of completed HVAC maintenance work by district employees or outside vendors, those documents were supplied. Any purchase orders for engineering controls for COVID-19, including Plexiglas barriers, ventilation systems, air sanitizers, and any other equipment since August 1st, 2020. Those records, that request was approved and the documents were supplied. We received a second request from Kay May. They wanted an access to the copy of the school operating budget and the list of all Winslow Township School District employees, including their title and salary. Those recommend, those records were supplied and the, the request was approved. And then the third one from Carly Hugh Romanella in, Romanello from the Currier Post, they wanted a copy of their resume and biographical information for Dr. Potteet when they made the decision to hire. Those records could not be located. They requested the Superintendent's contract. Those records were supplied, the Superintendent's date of hire, that information was supplied. And the Superintendent's updated salary, that information was also approved and supplied.
Thank you, Ms. Boyle. Moving now, Board members, to old business. Board members, would there be any old business that we would care to bring up at this time? Okay, thank you, hearing none. Moving now, Board members, to new business. Would there be any new business that we would care to bring up at this time?
Yes, Madam Pres.
Yes, Ms. Peterson?
I want to first thank Mrs. McLendon for reminding Board members to contribute to the High School Thanksgiving Basket Initiative. But I also want to mention that we have a high school Giving Tree project that we usually give to. Get those cards or whatever they're doing so that we can make sure we make a contribution as individual Board members.
Okay. Any other new business? To be discussed at this time, Board members? All right. Oh, just one. Just, well, no, this is not new business. Moving now, Board members, to informational items. And just before I move to Dr. Potteet, I just wanted to comment with regards to a very, a very interesting work, meeting, Zoomed that I believe Ms. Peterson and I attended. But I believe that we were all notified. I think Ms. Debbie Esposito sent us this information. And it was something that was called the Coffee House. And it was put, it was sponsored by the Midwest Plains Equity Allowance Center. And we were, there were people on this particular meeting from Missouri, Kentucky, Iowa, and what rural, suburban, urban. And what is so interesting, there were over, I believe, 100 people who had zoomed into this. But what I found interesting about this was that we all talked about the same kinds of issues across the board. So we truly are all in this together. Now, Ms. Peterson, if you would want to add anything to that, please feel free to do so.
I, Madam President, I further shared that information with the Board because there were some interesting topics.
Yes.
And I did take some notes and some resource materials that they shared with us. So I will send that to the Board tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Locate it because they may want to go into those, some of those.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peterson. Moving now. Yes, Ms. McLendon?
Just wanted to add one other thing. And I had a chance to, Ms. Peterson, after you sent the minutes from, I believe this is where I saw it at, but I think your minutes had information with each school listing and IT representative for each school?
Yes.
That was a great idea. Is that posted on the website, Dr. Potteet, so that parents can see the hours and the contact person?
Each building, if you go to the building website, that information is there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, for each school.
Okay, so it's on each individual school's website?
Yes, it is.
Perfect.
Okay. Anything else on the new business?
Just to respond. Just to let, I know some are looking at that data collection that we're getting on technology. So at, at our next Board meeting, we should have an update on additional information in terms of the data that we're collecting from those websites. So McLendon, I know you are interested, so we will have that and you will see it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Peterson. Any further new business statements, comments? Okay, Board members, now we're moving on to informational items. Dr. Potteet?
Yes, Madam President, members of the Board and the community. I have several information items for this evening. First of all, I'd like to address the questions that were submitted to the Board by the Citizens Advisory Committee. There are three questions. The first question states that it was noted that the Sarah Gordy Auditorium does not have a plaque signifying who Sarah Gordy is or her contributions to the school district. Mrs. Gordy predates me, so I only know of Ms. Sarah Gordy through word of mouth. There was never a plaque to my knowledge or anything of that sort that was installed during the time of the naming of the building, to my knowledge. However, I think it would be in our best interest if we would ask the community and members of the school district community who knew Mrs. Sarah Gordy to possibly come together and provide us some information. Because at this point, for me to be able to do that, I would not be successful in doing that task any justice. So I'm quite sure that there are still people in the community, as well as the school district, who may remember Mrs. Sarah Gordy and the contributions that she made. So I would just put that back out to the community and the Board, Mrs. Pitts, and ask for some assistance. Because at this point, you know, I only know her by the few conversations I had with people since I've been here.
Oh, very good. Dr. Potteet, I'm going to say this to the Board and to the community and also to current staff currently in the district right now. Because I, I can think of a few who may have a good recollection. So, so Dr. Potteet, what I'm saying is anyone in the school this, uh, community or the township who would have information to contribute with regards to Ms. Sarah Gordy. Are you saying that they can contact you directly via email? Telephone call?
Yes, I would prefer to email it to me. That way, whatever is shared, I would have it. And then we can compile and condense something.
Okay.
If, if I'm correct, and, and just correct me if, if I'm mistaken. And are we being asked to put something together so that we can install a plaque there indicating contributions to the district? Is that what I'm being asked?
Yes. But Dr. Peterson, yes.
Yes. Okay, okay. Okay, good. So if, if, if the individuals, Mrs. Martin, would just submit, send me an email, give me some information. I'm familiar with those kinds of things, markings that you see of famous individuals or people who made contributions. It's just a small overview, but at least you have some understanding as to what contributions they made while they were part of the community and the district. So if they would do that, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Potteet.
The Citizens Advisory Committee asks if a revision of the budget and expenses would be provided. Well, we do not, at this stage, need to revise our budget. However, I would ask that we follow our regular budget, budgetary process. And when Mrs. Boyle is doing our budget and making her presentations early or early spring, April, May, when we do our budget presentations, she can make the classifications and expenditure changes that were made during this pandemic. That would be the time that I would recommend that we share with the expenses and what the changes may have been, but not necessarily at this point. The last question, the CAC suggests that the opening date of school be pushed back to January the 19th. Allow for anyone who may have congregated over the holidays that the holiday give them additional time to quarantine. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, as well as the community, this is not the first time this question has been posed to me as a recommendation during my real talk with the Superintendent. As mentioned by Mr. Shaw, we had somewhat of a discussion about this. I did share with those individuals, the parents, that I would bring it up to you as a Board tonight, as a suggestion and recommendation. There's a lot of merit because if you follow the science, as I do on a daily basis, for many reasons, there is normally a spike after every holiday. They are anticipating a spike that's still yet to come. Even though the numbers are consistently high, they're still expecting a surge after, now and after the Thanksgiving holidays, which they anticipate will be within a week or two, which will run us right into the winter break and, of course, the Christmas holidays. And there's an additional spike. So my recommendation would be, yes, Board, we need to consider it. But there's a different, I would like to add an additional caveat to that. Most of my colleagues in Camden County during our Superintendent's meetings had decided that they were going to return if they are in remote. Many of them have been face to face, in remote, face to face, in remote, back and forth. So basically, the majority of them stated that they wanted to return the 19th. The 19th was selected because the 18th is Martin Luther King's birthday. So rather than come back on that Monday, they decided to do the 19th. However, my recommendation would be, we're only a week and a half away from the end of the second marking period. So why come back at the end of a marking period as opposed to just staying out the entire second marking period? That gives us several things that we're able to do. One, those parents who are still undecided by that time, as you know, we have a procedure in place through the reopening plan that if you want to change from remote to face to face, you have to fill out that form at least two weeks before the beginning of that marking period. And if you want to go from face to face to stay full remote, you would also do the same. I think it makes a clean break and also gives us a clean beginning. So I strongly support extending the opening. But I also would recommend that we consider the end of the second marking period into the beginning of the third marking period because I think it's a clean break and it gives everybody an opportunity to make their final decision as to whether or not they're going to go to a hybrid model or whether or not they want to stay full remote. The paperwork will all be in place and then that gives us an opportunity to do some real good planning and preparation for it as opposed to having a week and a half and people still undecided. You have some youngsters coming, some people may not. Because at this point, everyone would have to return in the hybrid model. But if you're undecided, you want to stay remote, we don't have anything in place for you to come in the middle of a marking period that, because that's the way we had put it in place. So at this point, I support the extension, but also would like the Board to consider the end of the marking period as opposed to the 19th. So that would be January 31st would be that first day.
So, okay, so Dr. Potteet, I have a question, but I want to, I want to see if any other Board members have any questions before I pose my question.
Sure.
Board members, any other question? Okay. Now, Dr. Potteet, are you, are you asking us for a recommendation tonight? Do you want the Board, are you presenting the issue with regards to extending the reopening date in January? Are you recommending that to us tonight? Do you want us to vote on that tonight?
No, I, I want you to think about it.
Or you want us to consider it?
Yes, I do want you to consider it because I think to ask you to make a decision tonight would be unfair.
Okay, so.
I, I'm asking you to think about it because the recommendation was made during my real talk with the Superintendent. The recommendation, of course, has also been made by the Citizens Advisory Committee. I agree with both entities. However, I want you to consider my extension because it's a clean break. And I wanted to look at my calendar I do have in front of me. The first day of the third marking period would be February the 1st because the end of the, the January is a weekend. But anyway, I think it's a clean break and it still gives parents who are undecided or who even want to make a change from the hybrid to stay full remote an opportunity to fill out the paperwork. The principals will have an opportunity to do the processing. So we'll know exactly by that time who's coming in, who's staying out. And once I give you the survey numbers tonight, I think that would even give you more of a reason why I would be making this recommendation. So at this point, I'll be throwing a lot of information at you tonight. And I think it would be unfair for me to expect you to make a decision. But with the information, I want you to go back because we have the Town Hall meeting on the 16th, which is next Wednesday. So that still gives us an opportunity to think about what it is we want to do and then also be prepared for open discussion. So I would like for you to, to consider it tonight and hopefully be prepared for a recommendation on the 16th. We are not taking any action that night, but of course, we have a, a meeting that following Tuesday. We are not taking any action that night, but of course, we have a meeting that following Tuesday on the 22nd. So things are going pretty fast, back-to-back. So I would not be asking you to make a decision tonight, but I would be asking you for your consideration and your thoughts. So as we move forward to, to the town hall meeting, I'm quite sure you possibly have communication with other parents, that sort of thing. So I, I just want to make sure we keep it open-ended so everyone will have an opportunity to express, you know, their concerns one way or the other.
Well, Dr. Potte, thank you for that clarification. And I would just say this to the board members that you heard Dr. Potte's recommendation. So we do have some time to consider it. There will be certainly time next Wednesday at the town hall meeting to further discuss it. But I would expect board members that on our meeting of December 22nd, that we would be prepared to let Dr. Potte know how we're going to move on his recommendation. And I say that because I'm thinking in terms of the parents, they need to know for sure which way we're going to go, when we're going to opening exactly. So I think, board members, please be prepared by our December 22nd meeting to come together and let Dr. Potte know exactly how we're going to vote on his recommendation.
And, and thank you, Mrs. Pitts, because I think just based on my conversation with the parents on Monday night, they wanted to know before the holidays because they too would like to plan what they may be doing. And it also gives us an opportunity to really pay close attention to the COVID-19 situation and those cases in our community, which leads me to my second information item because it is a very important component of what we're doing. Before I go to the COVID update, let me also say, board members as well as to the community, inasmuch as we are doing everything that we believe is in the best interest of our children, particularly their safety, the component that we don't have a lot or have not had a lot of conversation about is the teachers. Now, the teachers are still a major component of the decision-making process. And as I've been saying over and over, and I'll continue to repeat it, the health and safety of that, of our teaching staff and support staff are just as important. And I don't want them to be left, left out of the equation as we continue to move forward. I did mention Monday night that I have heard from several teachers and heard through others, through my administrative staff, that there is a serious concern of those teachers because inasmuch as the children may be at a point where they're ready to come back, but there's still some teachers who have the same concerns of their health and safety, their hesitancy, that sort of thing. So we still have to make sure that the teacher component is a part of the discussion and hopefully town hall meeting. I don't want to get too much into it because I think the town hall meeting will give the community another opportunity to have discussion in an open forum. Okay?
That's it.
The, the COVID-19 update, we as a state are still in a public health emergency. The positive cases in Camden County, which I focus on, are still very high. Today, we had nearly 300 positive cases. Seventeen of those cases were in Winslow. Unfortunately, in Camden County, we had five people who succumbed to the virus. The positivity rate here in Camden County is still 16%. Mr. Shaw mentioned earlier, based on our meeting, that 20% is that percentage where you pretty much don't have any, any any choice because at this point, the community spread would have been so high that you need to shut down in the best interest of everyone. So that positivity rate is 16% is, is really a high community spread. And that affects all of us, whether you're talking about the school, you're talking about the businesses, your community. So that continues to, to grow. The state is still in the orange shade. And that orange shade means that we are still in a high area. And we are as close to being in the very high at this point. And that is, again, following the science, that is still without us getting that surge from Thanksgiving. And of course, they're anticipating the surge over the Christmas break only because they're saying that, you know, if we all do what's expected of us, we can, you know, overcome this. But at this point, you know, there are a lot of different views and opinions and therefore people have the right to do whatever. And unfortunately, our numbers are on the rise. So that's pretty much where we are. And hopefully, I will be able to share with you on the 16th where those numbers are so that we can continue to consider the public health. The third item, are there any questions? I'm sorry, any questions in reference to where we are with public health?
I have a question. Well, I guess it's like a question in a statement. In your informational points, you know, you said something really key about we're heading still in the holiday season portion of it. And I know that Ms. Pitts, you just said that when we come back at the next board meeting to kind of consider what Dr. Potte was saying about the reopening of schools. Is it possible, because at that time, we still are in the holiday season part of it, is it possible, only because we're talking about now whether or not to open up schools come January, is it possible for us to look at maybe having a special meeting on that following week, on the 30th, on the 30th? That would give us a little bit more time to see how the numbers have triggered since leading up to Christmas and knowing afterwards, have we surged up? Because I think that if, if we decide on the 20, was it the 22nd, 23rd, that's still before the actual holiday gathering and so we may have a better understanding after the holidays where we're at. So that when we come together, if we did a special meeting on the 30th, we kind of will have a little bit more accurate numbers as to where we are in our, I mean, I guess in our county as well as, I mean, I know we want to give parents answers. But will we have enough information at that time to make a decision at the next board meeting? I see Mr. Shaw shaking his head. So what are your thoughts, Mr. Shaw? Like,
You're not going to know the numbers. You're not going to know the numbers after the Christmas holiday that quickly. The numbers won't, won't come out until after, after New Year's.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So if you're going.
So how do we work it?
Decisions.
How do we work by making a decision next board member meeting if we don't really have enough information to go on? That, that's my question.
Here's, let's, let's, let's answer that question, Ms. McLendon. With regards to not having enough information, that's a relative statement. What is enough information? And so what we also have to look at is this, is that parents need time to plan. They really do. And we have to consider that. And so we're doing the best. Now, again, remember, the recommendation from Dr. Potte is to push back the opening almost to the end of January.
Okay.
Which is, I think is key. So I think, I would hope that you would understand that we need to make that decision by the December 22nd meeting.
And absolutely, because first of all, we're talking about a moving target.
Yes.
I mean, it, it's moving all the time. We can't wait to the last minute for the parents. We can't wait for the last minute for the principals because there's a lot of work that needs to be done behind the scenes. There's still packets, particularly elementary, packets and things that need to be done. So, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the interim. So I think at this point, we got to go with the numbers that we have on the 22nd. And I think as, as, as long as the parents get enough notice so they will know, and that's the best we can do. Which leads me into my second, excuse me, my third point. And I put them in this order for this, for this reason. The third point I want to make is yesterday, I had a meeting with my board secretary or my business administrator, I'm sorry, business administrator who had a meeting prior to meeting with me with the company CM3 who's doing the work for us on our HVAC systems. They are now working day and night because we have been pushing January the 4th as I start, as I start date. And I've stated that at every meeting I've had thus far. However, where we are running into a problem with them is that there are certain motors in some of the unit ventilators that have to be replaced and/or repaired. Those motors, and I'm going to quote directly from the statement that he provided me. The Motor Supply House has stated that due to COVID-19 shutdowns, along with the motors being manufactured in Mexico, meaning that these motors, you have to get the parts from the manufacturers. So the manufacturers, of course, in Mexico, they send it to a supplier here in the United States. So you understand that process. But anyway, because of the COVID, they've been shut down. So at this point, getting parts have become a problem. And the volume of other school districts ordering motors to replace equipment, there are shortages of specific double-shaft motors for your units. Not all schools have this type of motors and/or issues. These concerns may be isolated only to the high school and the middle school. By December the 11th, I should have a clear picture of what motors we will have in time for the opening of school and what delay will be on the others. So let me be more specific for you. So he gave us a, a list of the motors. And, and, and here's the thing. At school one, for example, there are five units that have these motors. By December 16th at the town hall meeting, the gentleman said he can certify every other unit in every other classroom, but he couldn't certify these five classrooms if they didn't have the motors repaired. You follow me?
Yes.
Okay. In school two, for example, there were nine. There were none at school three, there were five at school four, there were none at school five. There were six at this time at school six, but they still have to continue going through school six. Schools, the middle school had 10, the high school had nine, and that's again, one of the schools, those two schools have the older systems. Basically, what he's saying is, would you be able to open schools if we certify all the other units with the exception of these classrooms? And my response to him is absolutely not. There's no way I'm going to be able to open middle school and not, and have 10 classrooms that we can't use. Or the high school, we have nine classrooms we can't use. So at this point, and you, you've already approved again tonight, the initial cost for us was $234,000. We have put an additional $200,000 into this project and you approved $100,000 tonight. $434,000 is going into this project. So it's not like we're not moving. I mean, we're pushing to get to that January 4th date originally. So at this point, we will not know until next week where we are because some of these units may be repaired, excuse me. Now, 25 of these units, because if you did the math, about 44 of them in the entire district. 25 have already been sent out to be repaired, but they haven't come back yet. And 19 haven't been sent to that repair place because others haven't come back. So at this point, we are in a situation where either these are going to be repaired or we'll know by the end of, well, beginning of next week, how many of those units they can repair and how many we still may have to wait. So at this point, and with them, you know, working during the day and in the evenings to get this work done because we have not discussed any extension of that deadline. Our discussion with him was, we have to have this completed by December 16th because that was the time I promised the community that I would report out. Okay? So that's where we are with these projects. We're continuously moving forward. And if the community, board members, after we have this discussion, you decide that you want to extend the opening of school to the end of the month, then that buys us a little more time. Now, it is at no fault of CM3 because there are a lot of companies out there that are closing because of COVID. And for those of you who've tried to purchase an item over the past few months, there are so many things in backlog and you can't get this, you have to wait for this months before you can get something. So unfortunately, they have come, become victim of that same situation because a supplier company has been closing down, opened, closed down because of COVID. So that's pretty much where we are. I will continue through Mrs. Boyle and myself having these conversations. And hopefully next week when we have that town hall, I'll be able to be more specific as to where we are. And then even if we do get to that point, deciding whether or not we can even accommodate the numbers of youngsters and not necessarily being able to use a certain number of classrooms, how many will be repaired, how many will not. So at this point, that's, that's where we are as far as the update with the HVAC.
So, Dr. Potte, I got a question.
Yes.
So with CM3, are they, they are waiting for parts to fix the ones that they already have for repair?
Yes, yes.
How, how long have they had the items that we're waiting for that's being repaired?
Well, I, I can't be sure because the process was, first you had to go through every system to, to inspect it. Then you had to go, and at the same time, you had to clean all of the ventilators. And then once you cleaned them, you start to getting them running, then you start pulling the motors. So at what point they started pulling those motors, I can't be sure. But they've had to start it some time ago because if you think about the number of classrooms in every school for them to be down to 44, then that means they've done quite a bit of work up to this point. So I'm not sure when they pulled them. But again, we, they hit a wall because they can't get the parts at this point. And I'm not sure whether or not they can say to me, they're on their way, we're going to get them tomorrow, they'll be here by the end of the month, they'll be here the first week of January. I don't have that information because he could not give me a specific date.
Right. And my concern now is with the parts that we need to have go into them to repair. When they, with the parts that they're waiting for, did they preorder the additional ones that we will need for the ones that we still have housed with us that they haven't brought in for repair? Because that would be a problem if that wasn't already on the order list so that when they get the parts, they have it for all of the ones that we need, even the ones that we haven't sent them? Or are we going to have to wait more?
Right. Well, I, I would say at this point, the, the ones that they haven't sent them is still a part, is still a part of the, the 44.
Okay.
Right, right. It's still a part of the 44. But here's what I do know. The supply chain of any manufacturing for any type of appliances, motors, whatever, that chain has been interrupted since COVID-19.
Right, yeah.
And, and they unfortunately could not predict it. And they had put these orders in when they called the gentleman, excuse me, the company to find out where the repairs are, when we going to get them. Their response was, well, we're still waiting for the parts, that sort of thing. So at this point, you can't specifically say, well, somebody dropped the ball here, there. I mean, we are all in a position where it's beyond their control.
Right. No, I agree with you 100%. I just know that now with the holiday coming around, the factories get slower.
There's a possibility, but you know, their, their work week is different from ours, you know? They don't do the whole Christmas break. They're going to be working while we're at home. You know, during the December, the Christmas break, whatever, right through. And at this point, you know, yes, I can say that they are making every effort by doubling up their hours and things of that sort to try to get this done. Because again, they were aware of the fact that January the 4th was their deadline. But it's beyond their control at this point, but they're still going to do what they can. So when the town hall meeting come, hopefully, you know, I'll have some more concrete numbers as to where we are. Maybe you can give me some additional information. But I didn't want to wait until the town hall meeting because this is the, we get a weekly report and this is the most pertinent information that showed up in our weekly report today. And that's why we had the additional conversations with the gentleman to make sure that we're on the same page. And I wanted to make sure you and those who are listening tonight don't get this information at the last minute because we want to be as transparent as possible because we have some very important decisions to make and we don't have a lot of time to make them. All right? Which takes me to the fourth. Which takes me to the fourth, um, item, and that is the, uh, the survey tabulations. And I'm not going to be as specific and detailed as I'm going to be for the town hall meeting because we had the tallies broken down by school and by grade. But what I want to do, and that's why, Mrs. McClanahan, we were able to pick up duplicates. Because we broke it down to the point where school five, uh, each grade, school one, each grade, um, and we were able to pick it out. So let me just give you the raw figures so you have an idea what we're looking at so far. For the hybrid instruction, which is two days in school, three days remote instruction, we had 963 responses who wanted hybrid. 963. For the full remote, we had 1,363 responses. And for the unsure, we had 505 responses for a total of 2,831 responses, which I believe is an excellent response.
Yes, it is.
In any kind of survey, when you get more than 50%, I mean, in most cases, 20, 30% response is good. Uh, but based on these nu- numbers, uh, we're close to like 70%. However, um, town hall meeting, I'll be able to give you the high school responses, middle school responses, uh, each school or by grade, depending on how much detailed information you want. But it also, again, gives us an opportunity, if we extend that opening of school, for those unsure and for those who may want to switch from one model to the next, um, at this point, um, and it again is a clean break for all of us. Okay? The last, no. Well, the last information item in terms of standard operational procedures, I want to piggyback on what Mr. Shaw mentioned, uh, about the town hall meeting. Um, we have in place, um, for the virtual town hall meeting, I am going to do a robo-call tomorrow informing all the parents and not just those individuals who cannot make it. For them, if they want to ask a question, because we don't know how many people we're going to get. If you want to ask a question, we're asking them to submit their question in advance. So anybody can submit your question in advance. That's going to eliminate, uh, the redundancy of people asking the same questions. It will also give us an opportunity to stay on task and move quickly. And for those who may come up with a question, in addition to what we may respond to, um, um, an opportunity to have questions answered. That way we'll be able to get a lot more questions answered because, again, as Mr. Shaw mentioned, it may be a test trying to do it that night, raising hands and whatever. So anyone, we're going to ask anyone, if you have a question, and I'm going to put the agenda, uh, in the response on, online. So all they have to do is go to our website. Uh, it will explain to them, and I'll just paraphrase. The purpose of this forum is to provide our district stakeholders with an extended opportunity to present feedback to the board on the reopening of school in January 2021, the status of the HVAC work on, in our schools, update on the COVID-19 cases in Camden County, the outcome of the reopening of the school parent survey, and any questions or concerns you may have about the current status of our schools. And then we are, we're going to ask them, if you have any questions in reference to what's going to be discussed, you may, um, place your question below, enter your question below, push submit, and we'll have those tallies ready, uh, no later than Tuesday. And that way I can look at all the duplicate questions and in answering most of those questions in advance, right before we get into the question answer series. It may eliminate a lot of duplication and help us to move a, a, a lot more quickly and maybe get to some of those other concerns. So that will appeal on the website. Uh, I'll do the robo-call tomorrow. It'll appear on the website on Friday. As Mrs. Shaw mentioned, we are, uh, going to places, uh, also on our Facebook page and every other, um, as well as the schools, uh, Facebook pages as, uh, or the schools' website pages. That way we can get it out as many places as possible and give the parents an opportunity to submit their questions, uh, prior to the meeting. Okay? Any, any, uh, questions or concerns in reference to that? All right, the last thing, um, uh, we, one of the things I, I also want you to know that, uh, we will continue to address, um, teacher issues, student issues, uh, in this process. We're going to continue to meet the needs of our staff as well as our students. So I don't want anyone to feel that anything is going to be, uh, going to fall through the, through the cracks. But we're going to continue as we have in meeting staff and student needs. Last announcement, and this is something I like to end on a good note. And I just found out right before leaving the building today, and I'm not even sure whether the building principal is aware of this because of the lateness of, of the information. Uh, I would like to congratulate our head football coach, Ken Scott and his staff, uh, because the Winslow Township High School Football Team won the USA Today Network New Jersey, West Jersey Football League 2020 Group Four Team of the Year Award.
Oh! Congratulations!
Yes, great. I mean, the, the, the team had an exceptional season this year, and I know it was a boost, uh, for all of us during these, uh, trying times. Um, it was good for our young men a- as well as that staff to continue to excel even under most challenging diff- uh, uh, circumstances. Uh, this award is being presented by RW, RWJ, uh, Barnabas Health, uh, Association. So we, we want to extend that congratulations, uh, to, uh, Ken Scott and his staff and to all those young men, as well as any young ladies who, uh, provided support services, the cheerleaders, the band, everybody who took part and the parents. Because, uh, this is the first time we've won a significant football award in quite some time. And of course, this was the best season we've had in 20 years. Uh, so it did not go, um, it did not go unnoticed. So I just want you to, uh, want you to know that, uh, these young men did an exceptional job. So, um, in conclusion, even though we have made specific, uh, items for the town hall meeting, we will still address any issues that come to us. Um, you know, student issues, teacher issues. If a parent have a student issue, it's not like we're going to say, no, we can't answer that. That's not on the agenda. We will address any student issues. If a parent calling and have a student issue, we will address it. Any staff, teacher issues, we'll address those during the town hall meeting. Uh, Mr. Shaw and I, uh, had that discussion. And again, that was one of the reasons why I wanted to make sure that we're not going to allow anyone or anything to fall through the cracks, even though we have our basic information items for the town hall. But if a parent still have a student issue, teacher issue, or whatever it may be, we will, you know, be flexible enough to address those issues. Uh, Madam Chairman, I know it's been a lot.
Yes.
But that, uh, is timely information, but that concludes my information items for this evening. Are there any other questions that I may be able to address at this time?
Just one more, Dr. Potey.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do I hear, uh, champ jackets or sweatshirts for the football team? He's putting it out there.
Yeah, yeah, well, uh, a board member, it is in our policy that if you achieve a certain level athletically, there are awards that go along with that. So, uh, let us, let us take a, a, a brief review of the policy and see what level that will be. And sure, we always make sure that our young people receive, uh, some type of award uh, for that achievement. And right now, you know, that, that was tremendous accomplishment.
Yes.
So yes, let me take a look at that and see, uh, what we can do for those young men.
Thank you, Dr. Potey.
Thank you.
And, uh, let me just say this. With regards to our Winslow Football Team, I would just like to say E-A-G-L-E-S, Eagles! Yes, Winslow Eagles.
Oh, oh, I thought you were going Philadelphia on me, Miss Pitt.
Winslow Eagles, Winslow Eagles.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. Potey. Board members, before we move right now swiftly into our, um, public comments, let me just, let me just make a few statements, if you will, um, to the community and to the board. Uh, it has been a point of my attention that on some of our, um, social media sites, that there were statements with regards specifically, um, to the way in which our last board meeting was conducted as it relates to the public comments. Um, and I feel compelled to respond to some of those postings because some were saying that I had cut off, uh, some of our callers. Um, let me just say this. With regards to, um, cutting off some of our callers and they were saying specifically some of our young ones, this is definitely not true. We all have our opinions, but these, these are the facts. I did not cut off, no one is cut off. Everyone who calls in has four minutes to comment. However, as you know, if they go beyond, I do have the responsibility of interrupting and informing them they have gone beyond their allotted time. Now, I will admit, there are times when I have allowed a parent or two to go a few minutes over. But now I guess I'm going to have to reconsider doing that. So I'm asking everyone, when you call in, please be mindful of the four-minute rule because sometimes, sometimes people remember things differently than how they actually happen. And that can make it difficult to see the truth and then move forward. But let me just end by saying this specifically to our young men who called, especially the ones who called at last meeting and said that they were going to leave the team. I'm asking you to reconsider all who were said that they're going to step away from my team. Have a conversation with your parents and reconsider. Because remember, we are Winslow. And sometimes, as we as adults know, that there are things that happen that just don't sit well with us. There are some things that happen as a result of an act of man and some things that happen as a result of act of God. And things are taken from us. And sometimes people are in our lives for a reason, but sometimes for a season. So to those young men who want to step away, I would say this. If your previous coach made such an impact on you, how about staying and letting him know and the community how much that impact has helped you? If you're stepping away, you may be stepping away from, from a good blessing. So, once again, I would appeal to those young men who called and said that they would step away because that, that, uh, did not, um, sit well with me. I would ask you again to reconsider. Reconsider. Because if you love the game, then the game needs you. And so does Winslow.
So, Madam President, if I may add to what you just said, um, I too agree with you. Um, with our young men that have a passion for the game, um, just throughout life, you're going to have to be able to adapt to change, whether it's whether it's in a professional job, change always occurs and sometimes, um, change can be good. Uh, but either way, just in life, life lessons, you have to be able to accept change, whether or not you agree with it or not, and just be able to move forward with it. And as you said, Ms. Pitts, um, with your current, your previous leadership, all those things that that coach has instilled in you, um, especially from an academic, academic point of view, as well as the love of the sport, continue to carry that, you know, because you're going to need that as you continue to move through life. So, um, I just wanted to add to that, Ms. Pitts, because last week, I mean, last board meeting, that did, uh, hit me too, to hear that some of our players were going to sit down. But you know, when you love the game, and I'm a baller, so I'm going to tell you this, I played ball, not in college, but high school. Um, and I still can pick up a basketball to this day and get a couple shots. And Dr. Potey, don't laugh because I can still take, I can still hoop. Um, but when you love the game, that's where your motivation lies. So, uh, stay true to the game and just take everything that was instilled in you and continue to push forward with it. So.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. McClanahan. I'd just say amen. That's all I have to say is amen. So moving now, um, with regards to our public comments, the Winslow Township Board of Education highly values the input of citizens in making important decisions that affect the children of our community. We also believe in the rights of citizens to observe our board meetings. So to ensure that all citizens have the opportunity to join us, and join with us at our school board meetings and offer comment, offer comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district, we ask that speakers follow these guidelines for making public comments. The board president or board secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make comment. Please respect the following procedures. Number one, all members of the public who have joined us in our school board meetings must treat each other in the board with respect. Number two, please clearly state your full name and address. Number three, please limit your comments to four minutes. Number four, submit your questions to the Board of Education with your name, address, and telephone number where you can be contacted. Your questions will be answered within a reasonable amount of time. And number five, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee, board member, other testifier, or member of the public. At this time, board members, I'm asking for a motion to open our meeting to public comment. Is there a motion?
Motion Shaw.
Blake second.
Move by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Blake. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any nays? England, we are now in open public comment. Ms. Boyle?
Okay, we're waiting for the phone line to ring. We, we've had three missed calls. Oh, here we go.
Okay.
Good evening. You've joined the public comment section of the board meeting. Please state your name and address, and then you can make your comment.
Joe Thomas.
Joe Thomas.
I would ring, Sickleville, New Jersey.
Good evening, Mr. Thomas. If you may, like to make your comment?
First of all, I'd like to thank Ms. Pitts for saying exactly what we needed to hear. Uh, so, you know, Winslow Township is a place that, that I love. And to reach out to and address things that happen that may not be positive and to address it and show that you care is, is what we need. Uh, Winslow Township right now is being watched by niggas. Um, like you said, our football team is being watched because now they're up in the elite. Uh, the Sickleville area is considered one of the most affordable and best places to live in the country. So we have a chance to really put Winslow in a better position going forward. There's a lot of things out here that we're doing good and let's not be afraid to tell them. Real talk, we're super, Monday is phenomenal. Let's talk about it. Let's talk about some of those things that are going on in Winslow Township. And frankly, our football team has been over 30 years, not 20 years, it's been 30 years. Let's talk about the achievements we have, the people that play out here. Let's, 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 it's okay for us to beat ourselves up, but let's not, not somebody from the outside come in and make acquisitions that are not true. We make good decisions based on our kids, and if that's what we do, let's talk about that. Let's not hide from the negativity. Let's put a point person to, if you want to go to different articles and talk bad about it, well, here's our response. Because like I said, we have a chance now to go into the next level because all eyes are on Winslow Township now, and this is a great place to live. It's a great place to go to school and it's always been like that. So let's keep up the good work and let's make, make, let's prove the naysayers wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
All right, we're waiting for the next caller. All right, the lines are open. All right, the lines are open.
Sound like a disc jockey there, Mrs. Boyle.
Oh, we have a caller. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Colleen. You've joined the public comment section of the board meeting. If you would state your name and address, and then you can make your, your comment.
Yes, my name is Scott Janicki, 155 DeSylvia Drive.
Okay, Mr. Janicki, if you want to make your comment?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Couple things, while I was on the, the call, the Real Talk on Monday with Dr. Potte, which I thought was very productive. A couple of things that I just want to comment, provide some input on. First would be that when I, when I did the survey, I did select the hybrid. However, since then, based on the trajectory of the COVID numbers and various other things that I'm considering, I have changed my mind. So I just want to, I just want to put out there that it's possible that the, the survey numbers that you have may not reflect the current preferences as in my case. So that's the one thing. The other thing that I would like to ask, I, I understand that it's, you don't want to make any hasty decisions, especially with something so significant as deciding between going back to hybrid or staying full remote. But I would really ask and urge the board to, if at all possible, to make a decision before the 22nd. Reason being is with the holidays, the week of the 22nd, really, there's so much chaos that that week doesn't even really count in terms of apparent planning what they're going to do. So really, we'd be looking at one week's notice over the holidays. And I just think that that's, I think that based on the, based on the numbers, the trajectory of COVID, the timing of the holidays, the surges that, that are being discussed, and the fact that all of these things, that January 4th is so soon after that, it just doesn't seem to make sense to push for that January 4th opening. And and I think that it's also, it also would be very consistent with a parent's decision to, to, with a parent having to decide whether or not their child is going to do a full remote or do hybrid, being based on a marking period, I think that it does make a lot of sense to, to have this decision be based on a marking period. And so I would, I would urge you to make a decision about the staying full remote or not prior to the 22nd. And if you do decide to stay full remote, I would, I would, I would ask that it be consistent and be through the end of the second marking period until we have more information, more data to consider. That's all. Thank you.
Let me just say this, caller, just to add a bit of clarification, we're not being asked specifically to open on January 4th. Dr. Potte is recommending that we not reopen until the end of January, perhaps January 29th. I just wanted to clarify that point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, caller.
Mrs. Pitts?
Yes.
May I just make a comment in reference to that? Because in hindsight, I do agree with Mr. Janicki. Because the 22nd does push our backs against the wall because you know, the Christmas holidays and everybody, you know, it is in sort of, you know, it's a fast-moving time, people are doing a lot of other things, whether it's COVID-related or not, whether you're staying home or going out, which you shouldn't be doing. But anyway, I, I think I also want the board to consider tonight that if we are in a position to make that decision during the town hall meeting, I would also ask that you consider that also. Because the 22nd is late, it, it is. The numbers aren't going to change that drastically, other than the fact that according to the science and what is being predicted, they're only going to go up just because of the time of the year and the season that we're in. So I just want to reiterate and ask you to think about that too, because 22nd is late. And of course, the building principals, as I stated before, they go home on the holidays, there's a lot of preparation that they need to, to do, particularly by elementary principals, because there are packets that are still being made. Whether we are full remote or not, we still develop packets and things of that sort. So I would just ask that you think about that and consider that also as an option, based on the comment that the caller made, and also as I sat here and listened, I do feel that if we can make a decision before the 22nd, I think it would be in the best interest of everyone.
Okay, Dr. Potte, so board members, if indeed, if indeed, and, and we have time to, to consider, we have a whole week. If indeed, however, we're going to make that decision on the 16th, we will have to change our notice so that our notice will say that action will be taken.
What are we considering? Because I'm, I'm kind of, are we considering just the date or whether or not we're going to open or stay remote? Like what is?
Just, just the date. Just the date, Mrs. McClendon, just the date.
Just the date.
Of opening, if we open.
Yes.
Basically, okay.
Yes, just the date. Okay.
Dr. Potte, this is Ms. Martin. If we're to make that decision possibly on December 16th, will that give our building principals at the elementary level particularly enough time to get what they need done?
Yes.
If we make that decision on that date?
Yes, Mrs. Martin, I think that, that would give us enough time because, for example, tomorrow, we'll have a conversation with the principals and let them know what your direction we're going in, so they can start doing some of the preliminary things. But I think that will give us enough time. I'm more comfortable with that 16th date as I, as I am with the 22nd. I'm, I'm, I just know that that's, that's not going to give us enough time because I know what needs to be done before we leave.
Okay.
Right, we do have a caller on the line.
Okay, Ms. Boyle.
Okay, I'm gonna take this one off hold. Good evening. You've joined the public comment section of the board meeting. If you would state your name and address, then you can make your call.
Good evening. My name is Chisa Burwell. My address is 1 High Meadows Drive in Sicklville.
I'm sorry, caller, could you, I'm sorry, could you, and don't count this against her four minutes, could you spell your name, please?
Sure. B H I S A.
Chisa, and what's your last name?
Burwell.
Did you spell it?
B. B U R W E L L.
All right, Ms. Burwell, if you want to make your comment?
Yeah, it's more of a question. And it's pertaining to the high school. I called up there with an issue in reference to my daughter, hi, Dr. Potte. I called up there with an issue in reference to my daughter. It came, can you turn that down please? I'm sorry, it's echoing in my ear. It came up, I spoke with Ms. Brown, who put me on hold for over seven and a half minutes because I was questioning what she was saying, which I said I would just come up to the school. And within five minutes, I got a call from Mr. Dawkins. The information that I got from Mr. Dawkins when I reached, it's in, all in reference to my daughter being marked as for an entire month, which she was under care of a doctor, which I relayed this information to the school. And now my daughter has like 60s, 20s, and 30s in her grade. Everything that should have been excused is not excused. I've spoken to three different people now, and I'm getting different information from three different people.
Mrs. Burwell, the three people that you spoke to, were they at the building level?
So I asked for who was in the office because Ms. Brown told me nobody was in the building. Asked for the guidance counselor, which is, guidance counselor, she said they're not in the building, so I have to email her. And then asked who, what admin was in the school because I was coming up there. She was really, um, Dr. Potte, you helped me out a few times last year, and I appreciate it.
So why don't we do this, Mrs. Burwell? I hear, I hear what you're saying, and I know you have an issue. Would, would you call the administration building tomorrow and I'll direct you to the immediate supervisor of the building level principals so we can address your concern? So would you just call the administration building tomorrow and we'll direct you to someone who can assist you, all right?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Dr. Potte, question with regards to administrators being in the building. They're only in the building on Tuesdays and Thursdays?
No, they're there Tuesday, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Now, counselors, the counselors are not there. The administrators are there, the secretarial staff are there. But just like the teachers and the support staff people, they're not in the buildings. However, they still are functioning remotely, so if there's an issue that needs to be addressed by a building principal or counselor, it can be and should be addressed. So what I'm going to do at this point is, I understand what a situation is at this point, I'll direct her to Dr. Carcomo, and I will speak to maybe Mr. Mills and find out whether or not he has been involved. Whatever needs to be done, we'll just take it to the next level and see if we can address it.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the lines are free. But there was a caller that tried to call through when we were speaking to Ms. Burwell, so I'd like to give it a minute.
Mrs. Pitts, can I say something real quick? This is just.
You can say, you can say whatever you like, Mr. Shaw.
I forgot to mention this earlier. Originally, I was registered for the county meeting tonight. And on the agenda, Ms. McClendon was being honored for her new board member certification.
All right.
I forgot to mention that earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. They did reach out to me, but I told them we had a board meeting and I needed to be there.
Yeah.
I told them, hold it, because I'm getting my board certification soon, so just hold it. They can recognize me at the next one.
Good, good. They're, they're holding. And sometimes that, their meetings very, very often coincide directly with ours, directly with ours. And so, but board members, if there's a time when you, you know, you want to step out and just let me know, because we, we do need a presence there.
Mrs. McClendon, get that commitment badge too.
They did recognize people. I'm, I'm, I have two devices going at the same time. So I'm in the meeting, and they did mention it. The next one is going to be on a Thursday, Ms. McClendon, but they did mention your name.
Congratulations, Ms. McClendon. We celebrate our own.
So Madam President, I haven't had any callers call through. I'm going to make and let the public know that the line is free if you want to make a call or make a comment.
Okay, Ms. Boyle, I've been watching the clock, and it's been over five minutes. And if we don't have someone to come in within the next two minutes, board members, I'm going to close out a public comment portion.
So how did your tour of the township and the lights go, Ms. Pitts?
Oh, listen, I'm going to do it again. Because I'm a Christmas lights person. And again, we do have a person in the district, the kids refer to her as Mama Sands. And her, I forget, and maybe, Mr. Shaw, you may know the address. I can't call her address right now, but her house is phenomenal. It is just phenomenal. Yes.
Madam President, we had a caller, but I'm going to ask them to call back.
Okay.
Here we go. Good evening, caller. You've joined the public comment section of the board meeting. If you'd like to state your name and address, you can make your public comment.
Thank you very much. This is Debbie Cullen. I live at Woodford Works, New Jersey, in Winslow. My question is to our community, we, Winslow has been looked upon as a district that people frown upon, and often our children are going out of district for choice schools. So my question, and it doesn't have to be answered tonight, is how many children are opting for choice schools? Because I understand that this is something we're working on changing, is keeping kids in districts. And even personally myself, we moved a year ago and we decided to stay in district, and we're just three miles because I believe in our district and I want us to keep our kids here. So I was just wondering, like, how many of our students are opting for choice and going out?
I, this is Dr. Potte. I don't know that number offhand. But that is something, you know, we can look at. But you still will probably not get an accurate count because there are some students who never attended our schools. They've always either went to a private or a parochial school who live. The only numbers we will probably get are those young people who may have selected to go choice. And keep in mind, because I've been looking at this for quite some time, these are choices that are not made by children or students. These are choices that are made by their parents. And the reasons vary across a spectrum of one to 10. But at this point, I can't speak to how many, but I've always pretty much left that as a parent's personal decision. And some people will tell you why they are moving. Some people will never share that information with you. So at this point, I can only be able to share with you those that have going through the district, at least through the registration process. And that will be the best we can do. But the reasons may vary, but it all boils down to the personal interests and opinion of those parents as to why they decide to send their children elsewhere.
Thank you. I really appreciate that response. I mean, my main concern is that we continue to uplift our community and do our best to keep Winslow proud.
And, and let me just say this, because I wasn't going to say it initially, but I will say it anyway, because I think it's, it's important that, that I do say it as superintendent. I believe that our children are receiving an education that's equal to and better than many of the places that people allegedly go to. And I believe that our children upon graduation continue to do well, have many choices, and do just as well as those young people who parents have decided to place them somewhere else. My position has always been that if you take your child to another school, and by the time they reach their 12th grade year and move on, if they have fared better than the seniors who are graduating from Winslow Township High School, then you need to show me that. You need to prove that to me. Because we have the records to prove that young people who stay in our district from K to 12 upon graduation has been very, very successful. And these young people are not only going to some of the finest schools in the country, but every college in New Jersey have a Winslow Township school district student. And upon graduation policies, young people are very successful. So as far as I'm concerned, it can't be because of the quality of the education, because it's proven year after year after year that our graduates are getting excellent education. If not, there's no way they could be able to go into some of these fine schools in the state and across the country. So people have their opinions. But I will contend that it's not because of the quality of the education. It could be for a lot of other reasons. But I know that our teachers are among the best. And they work hard. Our children get a quality education. And we're proud of the young people that graduate from our schools. So I just wanted to say that to you, so you'll know as superintendent how I feel about that issue.
Oh, I absolutely agree with everything you've said. I went to Lennox City High School, the old high school, which had a horrible reputation, but the academics were there. And it was amazing school system, and that's how I look at Winslow. Winslow was an amazing. Teachers involved, there's an amazing group. So I, my concern is that how So I, my concern is that how are we going to move forward to keep our children like thinking, our, our parents not like thinking that they like remain here and things like that.
Let me just say this caller, I think that's a great question that should come out next week at our town hall meeting.
Thank you. That's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
Sure.
Thank you, caller.
Ms. Boyle, where are we?
Madam President, someone tried to call through while the, the last caller was on the line. And they're back. I'll play, I'll answer the call. I don't think you do that. I think, I think that caller got cut off. So caller, if you would please call back. Good evening, caller. You've joined the public comment section of the board meeting. If you would state your name and address and then you can make your comment.
Michelle Shehadee, Seven's Almont Court, Secreville.
Can you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry caller. Could you spell your name? Because I, you spoke very fast.
I'm sorry. M I C H E L L A. Last name is S H E H A D E H. I'm at Seven's Almont Court in Secreville. Dr. Potey, I just got off the phone with Ms. Sands. And she had just asked me to relay you this message. So she's going to call you about 10 o'clock with information on Sarah Gordy. She also said there is a plaque. It's by the dressing rooms. Has she seen it? I just wanted to relay that to you guys.
Good. Okay, e- e- excuse me. She said there's a plaque where?
By the dressing rooms.
In the, in the back of the auditorium?
Yes, by the dressing-
Okay, that's why no one ever saw it. You know, most people like myself, I've never been back there. There's no reason for me to go back there. But it doesn't do any justice for us to have something of that importance hidden behind the curtains at the high school. Now, I have a 10 o'clock meeting. But if she would call and give that information to Mrs. McQuarrie, my secretary, I would appreciate it.
Okay, no problem.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Bye bye.
And thank you for your patience because we did cut you off a couple. Okay. All right. So we have an open line, Ms. Pitts. No one's, no one is calling through.
Okay, Ms. Boyle here again. I'll give it two minutes. Because it looks as if some of, some of our board members are are melting. I know. It's been a long day. And yes, I see, Mr. Blake. Yes, I know. I mean, I'm, I'm fully aware that many of you, this is maybe about your third or fourth meeting of the day.
We have a caller.
Okay.
Good evening, caller. You've joined the public comment section of the board meeting. If you would state your name and address and then you can make your comment.
Tawanda Womble, Timberland Apartments.
Tawanda, could you spell your last name? Womble?
Yes, W O M B L E.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Womble. If you would make your comment.
Okay. I apologize if this information is already known. But I'd like to know if the hybrid model is implemented? And if a parent chooses to have their child stay remote, 100% remote, will there still be online teachers and student interaction or teachings?
Yes, caller, this is Dr. Potey. Yes, yes, we are going to maintain face-to-face instruction at a minimum three days a week for those students who remain full remote. There is a possibility, in some cases maybe more, but yes, there will be face-to-face instruction by the teacher at a minimum of three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So yes, they will in full remote be able to interact with a teacher.
Okay, thank you. And secondly, given the contentious environment of the COVID-19 situation, everybody has an opinion about wearing masks. We can barely, from what I've seen, get adults to wear these masks properly in order to contain and protect the air qualities. How, what's going to happen when students don't wear their mask properly? And maybe one teacher catches them at one end of the hallway not wearing it proper and then the student moves along and they're not wearing it proper again. Like, what, how are you going to control for non-compliance of mask wearing in, in school?
Caller, again, this is Dr. Potey and I understand your concern. There's one thing I'd like to have happen first. Before they come to school, I'm asking that all parents sit down and have a conversation with their children about wearing their mask and the purpose of wearing their mask. Whether you agree with it or not, wearing the mask is going to be one of our rules and regulations, part of our policy that they must abide by. And there will be no exceptions. The safety issues, not only for them, but for all the other individuals in that school is about their safety. And safety is going to be the priority for staff and students. So I don't want to put myself in a position where we're going to say that students will be suspended if they don't wear their mask. But then we can understand, just like any other rules and regulations we have in place, rules are in place for you to abide by them. And we're going to ask the parents to support us and make sure that they wear their mask properly while they're in school. And don't make it an issue. And since we already know before we even get to school, they need to know that they must wear their mask at all times. They can only take it off in designated areas when told. But I'm hoping it doesn't become a problem for us. But we definitely will address it because we're talking about health and safety. You know, and, and that is non-negotiable at this point.
Okay, thank you very much and you all continue to be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boyle?
Line is free. I haven't had anybody try to call through.
Okay. Therefore, at this time, board members, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn public comments. Is there a motion? Motion. Motion by?
Blake Second.
Wait, wait, I didn't hear that. Who, where? Again, is there a motion?
Yeah, the motion came from Dr. Potey, Mrs. Pitts. I was just being facetious. Everybody was asleep. I just wanted to wait. To let them know that I'm paying attention here, Mrs. Pitts.
I'm going to ask you, motion to close public comment?
Mr. Shaw, you, you're muted. We didn't hear you. I saw your mouth.
Is he muted? I can't hear him.
Well, can, can- Motion, I mean, motion Blake.
Okay, motion, Mr. Blake. Is there a second?
Second Peterson.
Second by Ms. Peterson. It's moved by Mr. Blake, second by Ms. Peterson. All in favor? Any nays? Thank you. Public comment is closed. Moving now to executive session portion, Mr. Long. Is there an executive session for this evening? Mr. Long?
Uh, no ma'am. Can you hear me okay?
Okay, I can hear you now. Thank you, Mr. Long.
Madam President, may I ask? Just provide some information?
Yes, Ms. Boyle.
Okay, I contacted, I, I texted the gentleman from CM3. He has let us know that the vendor is aware of all 44 units. So it's not like Ms. McClendon that they only know about a portion of our need. They are aware of all that we are aware of at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Boyle, for being right on top of that. Okay. Board members, I believe that there is no executive session at this time. So therefore, I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion Shaw.
Blake Second.
Move by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Blake. All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any nays? Hearing none. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Enjoy the weekend and take a look at the lights.
Good night.
Everyone.
Everyone.
Good night, everybody.